Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to our town hall on Know Your Voting Rights. My name is Judy Florian. I'm from the League of Women Voters of Groves Point, and we're pleased to be partnering with the Groves Point Library, and we want to thank them. Annie, thank you for your hospitality, and thank you for having them as a co-sponsor for this event. So, the focus on our town hall tonight is to learn all about the new voting rights based on Prop 2. I would like to ask you all to please turn off your cell phones, and also save your questions until the end. I'd like to get through the presentation first, and there'll be plenty of time to answer questions after. So, Prop 2 of 2022 was a proposal on the November 2022 ballot in the general election to amend Michigan's state constitution to make elections more accessible and secure. Prop 2 passed with over 60% of the vote. Thanks to the passage of Prop 2, we now have many new and improved voting rights. These include the right to vote early in every statewide and federal election, the right to sign up to become a permanent male voter, the right to prepaid return postage on absentee ballots and applications, and the right to an enhanced tracking system for absentee ballots and applications, just to name a few. The goal of our town hall tonight is to inform you of the new rights that are available to you and how you can exercise them. So, we're going to talk about all these topics that are up on the slide. Thanks to Prop 2, the Michigan constitution now guarantees every voter the fundamental right to vote. The fundamental right to vote includes, but is not limited to, the right, once registered, to vote a secret ballot in all elections. This right also prohibits any person or legal entity, for example, a business or a state agency, from interfering with or unreasonably burdening the fundamental right to vote, whether by act of law, harassment, threats, or intimidation. Any Michigander can bring a lawsuit to enforce this right if they feel it's been violated. The next right we're going to discuss involves the certification of election results. The Board of State Canvassers is responsible for certifying that the results of every statewide and federal election are accurate. Prop 2 clarifies that the duty of the county and state canvassers is ministerial, clerical, and nondiscretionary. They must certify the election results based solely on the votes cast by eligible voters in that election. The certified results are final, subject only to a recount or a court order. Thanks to the passage of Prop 2, Michiganders can now have the right to engage in early voting. That is, to cast their ballot in person before the election, just like they would on Election Day. Now, you're probably going to say, "Well, I can already vote early in person at my clerk's office, so what's the difference?" The difference is, before the passage of Prop 2, the only way to vote in person before the Election Day was with an absentee ballot at your local clerk's office. Now, voters can actually vote early at a designated early-voting site by completing a regular ballot and inserting that ballot directly into the tabulator. Every city and township must offer early voting in every statewide and federal elections. Although cities and townships are not required to offer early voting in non-statewide or non-federal elections, meaning local elections, they can choose to do so. Early voting sites must be open for nine consecutive days, beginning on the second Saturday before the election and ending on the Sunday before the election. During this nine-day period, early voting sites must be open for eight hours each day. The eight hours can be offered at any time of the day, either consecutively or non-consecutively. And we do have some municipalities who are going to be piloting early voting for the November 2023 election, even though there's only local elections. The city of Marquette, for example, is going to be piloting it along with Lansing. And I understand also Ann Arbor.
Wasn't it?
No, I'm sorry.
I don't have my mind.
Can communities offer early voting when it's not required by the constitution? And the answer is yes. Cities and townships now will have the flexibility to offer early voting in non-statewide and non-federal elections for more than nine days and for more than eight hours per day during the constitutionally-required nine-day period. The earliest that a city or township can offer early voting is 29 days before Election Early voting will take place at an early voting site referred to as an EVS. Early voting sites are subject to most of the same requirements as Election Day polling places. For example, all polling places must be fully accessible, they must allow members of the public to observe, and must maintain all voted ballots in sealed containers at the end of each day. However, they may serve voters from more than one city or township and more voters than an Election Day polling place. Can communities work together to offer early voting? The answer is absolutely. Cities and townships can enter into agreements, and they have the option to have early voting either at their own as a single municipality, or they can partner with other cities and townships within their county or with the county. Early voting is a great opportunity for Michiganders to vote at a time that is convenient with their busy schedules. It also allows voters to know, right then and there, that their vote has been counted. And also, if you request an absentee ballot, you can complete your ballot, you can take it to an early voting site, and you can insert that ballot into the tabulator. Now, you may ask the question, "What will prevent voters from completing a ballot at an early voting site and also completing an absentee ballot?" The Secretary of State's office is developing technology for early voting poll books. Poll books are used at the voting sites, to be used at early voting sites, which will include voting history. The early voting poll book is required to be updated each day to reflect the absentee ballots received and also the ballots cast at the early voting sites since the last Another way that Prop 2 has made voting more convenient for Michiganders is by providing the right to sign up to receive an absentee ballot rather than just an application before each election. And you're going to say, "Didn't you already sign up to receive a ballot before every election?" No. Previously, when voters signed up, they signed up to receive an absentee ballot application before every election. They would still need to complete and submit the application every time to receive an absentee ballot. Now, voters will have the right to submit a single application to receive an absentee ballot before each election, which eliminates the need to submit an absentee ballot application every time. Now, how do you sign up? For now, you can sign up for the permanent mail ballot list. Voters can check the box on their regular absentee ballot application stating that they would like to receive a ballot before every election. We also understand that the Bureau of Elections is working on additional ways that voters can sign up for the permanent mail ballot list. What happens if you move? If you sign up to join the permanent mail ballot list and then you move within the state of Michigan, you will remain on the list as long as you update your voter registration address. If you move outside of Michigan and surrender your Michigan driver's license, you will be removed from the list since you will no longer be eligible to vote in the state of Michigan. If a clerk does receive reliable information, for instance, from the U.S. Postal Service with mail that's undeliverable, they may have a family member visit and say, "You know, my son has moved out of state," the clerk will send a notice of cancellation to that voter's address in Michigan. And if the voter does not respond or has no voting activity for two years, then the voter's registration will be canceled. After the clerk sends the notice to the voter, it is marked inactive, and they can still vote until a cancellation occurs. You also need to know that the state of Michigan has a Qualified Voter File. It's called the QVF. This file contains names of all registered individuals that can vote in Michigan. It also has names of voters whose registrations have been canceled, and it also has names of voters who are no longer eligible to vote in Michigan. They may be serving a term in jail or in prison. And the QVF file is updated constantly when a new voter registers, a voter updates his or her registration information, a voter dies, or a voter requests cancellation. If you need to be away from your home during the election season, for example, you're going to be on vacation, or you're going to be attending school, you can have your ballot sent to a different address. Once you sign up for the permanent mail ballot list, you're going to remain on that list unless one of five things does occur: you submit a signed request to the city or township clerk to be removed from the list, you move outside of Michigan, you move within Michigan without updating your voter registration address, you are no longer eligible to vote, for example, you're serving a sentence in jail or in prison, or you do not vote for six consecutive years. Now, the question comes up, "What happens if someone who's on the list passes away? Will they be removed?" And the answer is yes. And just so you know, when someone does pass away, their death record information is sent to the Social Security Administration, and it's added to what we call the Master Death Index. The Michigan Department of State receives this information from the Social Security Administration, and on a weekly basis, the Bureau of Elections updates the registration, cancels the voter registration of all those who have appeared on the Master Death Index report. This also removes them from the permanent absentee ballot list. The Michigan Department of State also receives information from the Electronic Registration Information Center, which is referred to as ERIC, and this contains information about voters who have passed away, and they update the records accordingly. Okay, so about this list, is it secure? Yes. To join the list, the clerk must confirm the voter's identity by comparing the voter's signature on their application with the signature they have on the voter file. If you regularly vote from home, I would strongly encourage you to sign up for the permanent mail ballot list the next time you request an absentee ballot. Now, when people talk about this permanent mail ballot list, I've heard concerns that this list makes it easier for voters to commit fraud, if ballots are sent to old addresses, or to voters on a list who are no longer eligible, or to voters who don't even intend to vote in the election. Is this true? The answer is no. First of all, as explained above, voters will be removed from the list when they move in-state without updating their address, or when they move out of state. This helps ensure that ballots will not be sent to old addresses. But even if a ballot is sent to an old address, there are security measures built into the (excuse me) absentee ballot system to verify the identity of the person returning every ballot. An absentee ballot will not be counted unless the signature on the absentee ballot envelope matches the signature in the voter file. Okay, let's talk about voter ID in Michigan. Michigan has had the same voter ID laws since 1996. Prop 2 essentially wrote this existing voter ID law into the constitution, ensuring that all eligible voters could cast a ballot regardless of whether or not they have a certain type of photo ID. Do you need a photo ID to vote in Michigan? And the answer is no. You will be asked to provide a photo ID when you arrive to vote, either at your clerk's office by absentee ballot, at an early voting site, or at a polling location on Election Day. If you have an acceptable photo ID with you, you must show it when asked. But if you do not have an acceptable photo ID, or do not have an acceptable photo ID with you at the time you go to vote, you can sign a simple form called the affidavit of voter not in possession of picture identification, and you can vote a regular ballot. If you fraudulently complete this affidavit, it's considered a felony in the state of Michigan with $1,000 fine. So, what kind of ID is acceptable? Here's the list. An expired or current Michigan driver's license or state ID, and this is the only type of ID that may be expired. All others must be current. A driver's license or ID from any other state. A U.S. passport or federal government-issued ID. A local government-issued ID. A military or tribal photo ID. Or a student photo ID issued by an educational institution. There are many reasons a voter may be without an acceptable photo ID when they go to vote: they can't afford it, they do not have access to transportation to get an ID, they left their ID at home, or they simply lost it. These voters should not be deterred from exercising their fundamental right to vote. The passage of Prop 2 also made several improvements to the absentee voting experience as well. The first change concerns postage for absentee ballots and absentee ballot applications, and it's pretty simple. The state must now provide funding for return postage for all absentee ballot applications and when mailing out absentee ballots. Voters now also have the right to be notified by their clerk of any issues with their absentee ballot application or ballot, such as forgetting to sign the outside of their absentee ballot envelope, which I understand is probably one of the largest single things that causes a ballot problem. And they also provide instructions on how to fix the issues. If you're notified of an issue with your absentee ballot or your absentee ballot application, you must be given an equitable opportunity to correct it. A uniform statewide process for notifying voters of these issues will not be in place until the spring of 2024. Now, you may be asking, "What is considered an official signature?" Your official signature is the signature you use on your voter registration application. And if you don't know what that is, and I will confess, I was one of those people, I thought, "What does my signature really look like? What's my clerks think my signature? Is my signature really being checked correctly?" So, I went down to the clerk's office and said, "Can you show me the signature you have on file for me?" And they did. So, if you have any question about what your official signature is, just go to your clerk's office, and they can tell you.
Judy, can I quickly interject there?
Sure.
The easiest way to actually verify what we have on file for your signature, if you have a Michigan driver's license or state ID, is to look at your state ID because that signature on there is what we have in our file. So, again, that's the easiest way to look. So, there's the original signature on your driver's license, the signature that we have.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd like to introduce Steve Gerhart, who is a clerk. So, clerk, he knows all the answers. And you're a clerk from where, again, Steve? I'm sorry.
I'm the chief deputy city clerk for the city of Ann Arbor.
Okay.
Also a resident here.
He lives in the woods. I was going to give him the prize for coming the farthest distance, but he just came from the woods, so. But thank you, Steve, for that clarification. I appreciate it. Okay, where are we here? Okay, can you track the status of my absentee ballot and application online? Voters now have the right to a new and improved state-funded online ballot tracking system. Thanks to Prop 2, voters will now be able to track their absentee ballots and absentee ballot applications online more closely. For example, voters will be able to see details about any issues related to their application or related to their ballot, and will also be able to learn and by when they must fix them. In addition, voters will have the option to sign up to receive all of this information through text messages and emails. The Bureau of Elections is working on creating this enhanced tracking system, and we anticipate that voters will be able to use it and to sign up for notifications later this year. In the meantime, voters can use the old tracking system that's currently in place, and they can check the status of their ballot application and absentee ballot by going to the Michigan Voter Information Center at mi.gov/vote. Once the enhanced tracking system is ready, we encourage everyone to use it and sign up for the notifications. Thanks to Prop 2, voters now have the right to at least one secure ballot drop box in their city or township. A ballot drop box is a secure, locked structure that voters may use to return completed absentee ballot applications and voted absentee ballots. Many communities already have one or more drop boxes, but all communities must ensure that they are complying with the constitutional amendment by having at least one drop box for every 15,000 registered voters. Communities that already have the constitutionally-required number of drop boxes are all set, but they may decide or choose to provide more. Clerks must distribute drop boxes equitably throughout the city or township. This means clerks should place drop boxes in areas that are convenient and accessible to voters, including voters with disabilities, such as downtown areas and public spaces. You will be able to find the location of a drop box in your community by going to the Michigan information center, Voter Information Center, at mi.gov/vote. No, you cannot use any drop box in the state. You may use only the drop boxes that are located in the city or township where you reside. For example, a voter who is registered in Warren may use any drop box in the city of Warren, but may not use a drop box in a neighborhood in Detroit. And in Groves Point, I live in Groves Point Park, I can only use a drop box in Groves Point Park. I cannot put my absentee ballot in a drop box in the city of Groves Point. Drop boxes must be accessible 24/7 during the 40 days prior to an election up to 8:00 PM on Election Day. And we always get the question, "Are drop boxes secure?" Yes, they are. They must be securely locked, bolted down, and designed to prevent the removal of absentee ballots or applications, except by authorized election officials. Currently, many, but not all, drop boxes are also subject to video surveillance, but starting in January of 2026, all drop boxes will be subject to video surveillance. The last absentee voting improvement concerns military and overseas voters. Before the passage of Prop 2, absentee ballots from all voters had to be received by the voter's city or township clerk by 8:00 PM on Election Day to count. Now, however, absentee ballots from all military and overseas voters are considered timely if postmarked by Election Day and received by the city or township clerk within six days of the election. So, who counts as a military or overseas voter? Military and overseas voters include members of a uniformed service on active duty and their dependents, members of the Merchant Marine or their dependents, National Guardsmen who are activated on state orders, or any civilian voter living overseas. And that's my last slide. So, guess what? It's time for questions. Lori?
So, at the very beginning, the Prop 2, the amendment gives the right to sue for interference or any violation.
Harassment, intimidation.
Yes.
Right.
So, what's the remedy provided by the amendment for, if you have a case of harassment? In other words, I'm harassed, I sue, what's the remedy? Is it monetary damages?
Good question. I don't know the answer to that question.
So, that's one part.
Okay.
And the second part of that, and I think this may be incumbent on the lead to help educate voters, because, sure, we have a right to sue for anything, but your average person is going to be intimidated. Like, "It's going to cost me a lot of money to hire a lawyer and sue." So, maintaining, like, my guess, organizations like the ACLU may be handling suits like that, or other lawyer organizations. So, making voters know that, you know, if you are harassed, you can sue, it's not going to cost you. So, I think some education there, because if they don't know what their rights are and how they can remedy the situation, it doesn't mean much.
Yeah, that's a good point. And it's also important to understand, too, that there have been, we obviously know, instances of harassment, intimidation among certain populations in certain areas of the country, certainly in Michigan as well. There is an election protection hotline that is available and staffed by attorneys on Election Day, and it's actually open probably at least two to three weeks before Election Day. So, if people are having problems getting their absentee ballot, or they're having problems getting information from the clerk, or whatever it is, there's a toll-free number they can call, and hopefully those can be remedied ahead of time before Election Day. But there have been times on Election Day where we have sent people out on the election protection hotline. They've sent people out to the polling place to see if they can get that issue resolved. So, that's also important, to make sure that voters understand that that avenue is available to them. But, good point, Lori, on what you're saying. I appreciate that. I'll check on the remedy, too.
I'll follow you.
Okay. Can you tell she's an attorney, right? Lady in the back.
She's an personal attorney. About what is...
What's harassment defined?
Harassment is defined, anything that would prohibit you from being able to cast your ballot. You know, whether they look at you in a certain way, they talk to you, or they may call you names, they could make derogatory comments about you, something that would intimidate you or make you feel harassed, and you wouldn't feel comfortable casting a ballot. And poll workers need to be on the lookout for that as well. You know, I serve as a poll worker, and there's lots of people in this room that serve as poll workers, and we're constantly making sure that people are all treated fairly at the polls, and they don't have any roadblocks for getting that ballot cast.
And I will say that there is state legislation currently to better define what the harassment is and what the process is.
Yes, Steve says there is currently legislation being proposed to further define harassment and intimidation, which will hopefully make that much clearer. Wilhelmina?
I have a question about who's responsible for sending a death notice to the state so the person is moving to a [inaudible].
Okay, who's responsible for sending the death notice to the state? It can come in various forms. It can go from the Social Security Administration. Sometimes clerks get information from someone from the voter's family that may have passed away, and they will, you know, and obviously, closer to Election Day, we'd much rather have the clerks get that information because they can get it removed from the rolls very quickly. But there's all kinds of different places. Through ERIC, that electronic registration system, there's all kinds of mechanisms to find that.
The other large source is your larger communities, and your county clerks serve as your register who is processing the death records. So, as they're processing death records for their county, they're going ahead and noting that they're sending that list out to your local clerk so that your local clerks can also process those.
Right.
It's not, that was one attorney, the funeral director who's responsible, you know, something with that death [inaudible].
They reported either your local clerk or your larger jurisdiction, and they're recording that as a list of dead people that get sent out to the local clerks for cancellation. Also, a lot of times, what you'll see is the local clerks are going through the obituaries to see, "Can I find it this way and cancel voter registration?"
And the funeral directors also report it to the Social Security Administration, so it goes through there as well. Marge, did you ever get your hand up?
No, I was just going to comment.
Okay.
Since there is a death certificate, it has to be filed with the state.
Right. Death certificate has to be filed with the state, correct? Yes, in the back.
Two questions. Is there a policy on open carry at the polls in Michigan? And secondly, if someone, well, what would be a perfect example? Puts their ballot in the wrong municipality ballot box, will that clerk send it to the proper location?
Okay, two good questions. One is, is there a policy on open carry in Michigan polling places? Right now, there is none. Right now, there is not, although I believe it either has been proposed legislation or there is going to be proposed legislation to have that changed.
So what is the law right now?
The law is, they can open carry at a polling place.
Well, is that subject, though, to the individual polling place?
No, no.
Like, for example, if it's a church?
No.
Polling locations no longer serve as, like, they're designated.
They're not enforcement.
Right. So a church is no longer a church on Election Day, it's a local location.
Right. There is no way to enforce that at this point. That's why we're hoping the legislation will change that. And your other, I'm sorry, your other question?
If someone puts their absentee ballot in the wrong.
In the wrong drop box?
The wrong municipality.
Okay. The clerk will do everything within their power to do that. I'll speak from personal experience. I know, I, I used to work the polls down at our Gross Point Park Municipal Building. And when the clerks went out, at one point, I think it was like 5:00, and picked up the ballots from the ballot box, someone from the city of Detroit had left their ballot in the Gross Point Park ballot drop box. And the clerk immediately called the Detroit clerk, and someone actually did come and pick up that ballot and took it down to the precinct. So I think the clerks do everything they can, if they got one in the wrong place, that they try and get it to the right place within that timeframe before the polls close. Yes.
I know there's been a little bit of concern about our clerk about, there are difficult finding poll workers and paying poll workers, and now for nine days of in-person voting, is there something that, you know, that can help these clerks find some people and figure this out? And it's not just the people, it's using a space that might be designated as a court or, you know, that there might not be somewhere else to go.
Yes, you have, you have voiced a couple of concerns that have come up through this whole process. One is, are the clerks going to be able to find sufficient number of poll workers for those nine days? And I know there's a coalition of which the League of Women Voters is a member of a coalition in Michigan of many organizations that are working on this issue of trying to help clerks find and recruit poll workers. You also need to understand that students 16 years of age or older can be a poll worker. And I don't think they realize they can get paid for it. So I think it's great as a civic responsibility for our, for our youth, our 16-year-olds, to work the polls. So we're working on that population as well. The other thing is the burden on having one site for nine days. It has to be a secure site. You've got to be able to have your ballot secured every day. And how do you find a place that you can use for nine days? And the clerks, you know, are working, that's why it's kind of nice if they can come up with an agreement where they can partner up and use one facility. The downside of that is sometimes those voters might have to travel a distance to vote early, but that's like the trade-off. So those are all the kinds of things that the clerks are grappling with, and it's going to be a burden on the clerks, there's no question. But it's also, we need to make sure that we use early voting to make sure that we can keep it, because, you know, we might make sure it's going to be funded, it can be paid for, the clerks are going to get some financial support through grants to help pay for this. So there's lots of stuff that has to be worked out. And that's why I think it's good that some of these municipalities are doing some pilots on doing early voting now before we get into the state and federal elections in 2024. Anything else? Lori, and then, go ahead.
Is there a requirement that the drop boxes be emptied daily or so many times a day?
Not really. I know, again, I'll speak for the park, I know on Election Day, they're checking that drop box, I think, every hour to make sure that the ballots are taken out. But I don't think there's any requirement that they have to be checked daily. And if they're secure and bolted down, and you can't reach in to get the ballots or the applications out anyway, you know, they probably don't have to be checked every day, especially early on in the process. And you all may or may not be aware that tomorrow, the 28th, is the day that absentee ballots have to go out to those who have requested them. That's 45 days before the election, so that starts tomorrow. Question over here.
The legislation, I'm sorry, the legislation actually does, that did, put that into law, does actually require the ballot boxes to be checked, because part of the signature curing process that requires us to notify you if there is a deficiency on your application or ballot plays into checking the boxes. So up until eight days prior to, it does have to be checked up until 5:00, and then it can receive after 5:00, it's considered the next day. And then within the last eight days, it has to be done, everything has to be done that same day.
Right.
So there is a requirement that they are checked.
Good. So nice to have a clerk here.
But again, it's only the days, only the days that clerk's office are open.
Open, correct.
So it's not like you're, we're not burdening, burdening your clerk's office
Right.
for 45 days to be going in every single weekend.
Right.
Your clerk still does get the occasional weekend, while we probably don't really get that weekend.
Great, okay. I had one in the front, back, and then you.
And a lot of questions about observation. I assume this is something that has been worked out now, or a question about open carry and so forth. The other thing is, are you limited to the number of observers that can be at any polling location at any one time? Are they allowed to speak with you and interact with you if you're in the process of voting? I assume not. And when they check and update those poll books, are they allowed to interpret that as well, or does the act of voting?
Okay, we have multiple questions here as it relates to observers at the poll. We have poll watchers, and we have poll challengers, okay? Poll watchers, they're just there to observe. They can't talk to anyone, they can't look at poll books, they can't do any of that. But they can certainly be at the polling place and watch what's going on. If you have a poll challenger, that person, if they have a reasonable challenge, they may want to challenge a person that they don't think the person at that polling location is eligible to vote, they can make a challenge to that effect. And there is a limit to the number of poll watchers and poll challengers that you can have at the polls, but I honestly don't remember. Steve can tell us, though.
It's, you can have no more than two per location in a polling location, but only one can be actively challenging at a time.
Okay.
When we get into the absentee count board, it's dependent on how many people you actually have processing your absentee count board or your absentee ballots. And I believe the number that they settled on is one for every poll worker, for a political party, or an organizer.
Everybody got that? Great. I have, Liz, I have a question in the back first.
That's okay. I was just wondering, why are, like, for this elections cycle, like, are there some areas that we see, like, more issues with than others? Or like, some areas that, like, need more poll volunteers than others, like in Gross Point or nearby Detroit areas? I'm just, I'm kind of aware of, like, local poll box issues, like, the issues with voting, voter intimidation issues.
Okay, the question is, are there some areas across the state that have more issues related to voter intimidation and harassment and other voting issues than others? Yes. It depends on where they are located. You know, it could be a low-income area, for example. A lot of people can be disenfranchised, voters can be disenfranchised in some of these areas. In Gross Point, we certainly haven't had a problem finding poll workers and things like that, but there are some areas across the state that do have some, have some issues. And so that's one of the reasons we have a coalition in the election protection hotline, is to be able to find out who those, where those areas are and how we can help those voters cast their ballots. Yes, sir?
Yep. My question is about federal elections and the mandate that only US citizens can vote in a federal election, and the list of IDs that were shown. How does one tell who is a citizen and who isn't? Who's responsible to determine that?
Okay, your question is, why can only US citizens vote in a federal election? And who determines?
It's a mandate that only in a federal election and voting for federal candidates, it has to be a US citizen.
Correct.
That is written in stone. My question is, as I looked at the IDs that were presented in your slide, how does one tell who is and who isn't a citizen of the United States and whether they can or cannot vote?
That's, that's when you register.
Well, when you register to vote, at that time, you indicate that you are a US citizen.
The ID is just for identity.
The ID is just your photo ID to say that's who you are.
Okay. For example, an out-of-state driver's license is accepted to be able to vote, and that license can be from Illinois, California, and New York, who currently issue driver's license to anyone that asks. There's don't check as to whether that person is or isn't a citizen.
So everybody that registers to vote in Michigan fills out a form. On the top of the form, you check out a box under penalty of perjury that states, I am a United States citizen.
Correct.
That is eligible to vote.
Right.
That is your check on the process. The also check on the process is that you're filling out your Michigan driver's license or state ID or the last four digits of the social security number.
Correct.
The last four digits of the social security number plus the person's name are checked against the national social security database to, again, confirm. So again, there's none, yes, there's checks.
Right. Yes, Liz?
About the poll challengers. Don't poll challengers have to get credentials?
Yes, poll challengers do have to have credentials. And most organizations, if they have a poll challenger, they put them through training before they can actually be a challenger at the polls. Okay, I'm going to take one more question. Catherine, you're it.
Could we have a little chart of poll workers, poll watchers, poll challengers?
Yeah, Catherine's asking, can we have a chart of poll challengers, poll watchers, poll workers, so we can tell the difference between those?
Well, just, you know, let's get a little.
If you go on the Secretary of State's website under Michigan.gov/vote, there's like a information for election administrators, and there is a kind of easy-to-use chart that differentiates poll challengers versus poll watchers for you that is nicely broken down of what the requirements of a challenger are, that they have to be a registered voter in the state of Michigan, here's their rights and responsibilities, what they can and cannot do versus a challenger or a poll watcher that basically just gets to sit in the corner and do nothing.
Yeah, and that's, Steve, I'm glad you brought that up, because the Michigan Department of State has an excellent, excellent website that has all that kinds of information on it. You can also apply for your absentee ballot, get on the permanent mail ballot list, you can register to vote online, you know, it's, it's all there. So, yeah, it's available. You guys just don't want to stop, do you? Okay, Liz?
Just, just a term to throw out, just because we talk about poll workers. Why no in the arms? Because I've worked the polls in the first, Derek, the city clerk, he insists on calling us election inspectors. So there's another, which, as far as I can, election inspector is the same as what we refer to as a poll worker.
Yes, election inspector and poll worker are synonymous, correct. Okay, Wilhelmina?
I may, I may have answered this question, but can you be a poll worker in any location you want to stay?
Yes, you can, you can be a poll worker if you want to drive up to Traverse City for the weekend, and on that, and on that Tuesday, you can be a poll worker. You do not have to be, live in the city where you are a poll worker, you can be, because we have people.
Anyone wants to come out and hang out with me in a car.
That's right. We'll be happy to.
More than welcome.
Because we've had folks from, we've had folks from Gross Point that have worked in Detroit, we've had people in Plymouth that have worked in Detroit, so, yeah, they'd love to have you.
If I'm trying to be a poll worker, sorry, if I'm trying to be a poll worker, how do I, like, go where I most need it? How do I know where to go where I most need it?
Well, there's, there's several ways you can sign up to be a poll worker or an election inspector, I'll use both terms. One is you can go to Democracy MVP, which is the state, on the state website, Democracy MVP, and that will take you to the site to apply, fill out an application to be an election inspector. Or you can go to your city clerk's office. You can go to their website, typically they have that poll worker slash election inspector application on the website, and you can complete it and turn it in to your local clerk. Okay. I do want to remind you also that there are four great handouts out there. If you didn't pick them up, one is on early voting in Michigan, the permanent mail ballot lists in Michigan, drop boxes in Michigan, and also ballot tracking in Michigan. So with that, I want to, I want to thank you all for coming. And I hope this was helpful to you, and this recording will be available on our YouTube channel for those who want to go back and revisit it again.